Dear colleagues, good morning to everyone. We will just wait for a couple of minutes to allow all participants to register, so we will be with you in a few seconds. Thank you for your patience. We will be starting the meeting in a few minutes. Thank you. So, dear colleagues from all over Europe, good morning to everyone. It is a pleasure welcoming you to this online town hall meeting of the Erasmus without paper consortium and the European Student Card Initiative. It is a pleasure having you here, and we will all hope that it will be a very fruitful meeting today. So I would like to start right ahead with this meeting and to set up some rules first of all, because we already see a question in the Q&amp;A functionality. So this is a webinar setting, so that means that the chat will not be enabled. So you have to pose any questions live, as it is a town hall meeting, and we will have your questions here. Let me also introduce the panelists that we have with us today. We have the honour of having here for this event. So to begin with, our colleagues from the European Commission and the Director General for the Education and Culture. So we have Bruno de Oliveira Alves, who is the team leader of the European Student Card Initiative. We also have Alexandra Licht, who is a policy officer from the same unit. Theo Mink, a policy officer as well from DGAC. We also have with us Harpa Siff, Arnaud Dotier, who is a WP+ relationship manager from DGAC as well. Paul Ays, a policy advisor and EWP+ task leader for communication and outreach from Ghent University in Belgium. Daiga Kuzmane, EWP+ project coordinator from European University Foundation. Joao Basilar, executive manager from European University Foundation. Valer Meus, EWP+ project coordinator from the same organisation. Tibortoth, EWP+ consortium member. Konstantinos Karaglannoglou, EWP+ task lead for the EWP dashboard from the Aristotle University of the Saloniki. And as well, we have Antonio Soeroth from the European Student Card Project, sorry, LOT, Communication and Training for the Entity Data, from the Entity Data. And Jerul Van Lents, also from the European Student Card, LOT IT project manager from Entity Data as well. My name is Nikos Lyolios from the Aristotle University of the Saloniki, and I will be the moderator today. So I wish that it will be a fruitful meeting and that we will be able to reply to your questions. Let me remind you that there is a Q&amp;A functionality where you can pose your questions and you can upvote questions. So please do not repeat probably the same questions, thus go through the questions that colleagues might already pose there and vote them. It's an open format, so we do not have a strict agenda. It's just you having your questions here. So let's start probably, and please put your questions in the Q&amp;A to start with this one. The Q&amp;A is already up and running. In the meantime, I will pass the floor to Harpa just for two reminders that we have for you. So first of all, sorry, I need to pass the floor to Bruno. I'm sorry about that. So Bruno from DGAC, the floor is yours for a welcome message to all participants, and then Harpa, we go to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nikos. I will be very brief. It's by means of introduction. I would just want to say that I've only just joined the European Commission ESKI team, the team working on this initiative. And I'm delighted to be working with such a committed and dynamic group of colleagues, both inside the European Commission and outside the European Commission, who are really driving this project and the success of this project. And of course, today is an opportunity to hear from the broader set of stakeholders on what are the things that we can always improve and what are the things that require clarification. So I'm looking forward for today, and I'm looking forward to continue working with you and with the colleagues to make this project an even bigger success than it already is. So thank you for organising and for giving me the floor. And now I'll pass it on to Harpa.
Yes, thank you. Hello, everyone. A pleasure to be with you here today. I would ask the colleagues who are sharing the screen if they could turn to the next slide, please. Thank you. So we just wanted to take the opportunity to share with you two important reminders, since there are so many of you that have been able to join today. And thank you so much for taking the time out of your busy schedule to join us. It's extremely important. The first quick reminder that we wanted to share with you is that we have ongoing consultations on the processes of nominations and transcript of records in the EWP user groups. And very specifically, we wanted to share with you that there are two links in the user groups and that have also maybe been shared by digital officers, for example, two surveys on these processes. And the deadline to reply to them is October 28. And it's incredibly important that we hear from as many of you as possible on these processes, because the more we know about how things are running today, the more specific and concrete we can be in the mandatory business requirements that we're working on to finalise by the end of the year. So these are documents that will describe what business processes and what requirements all systems that are connected to EWP must consider and comply with, so that your work is facilitated as well as possible for these processes. So please, you can scan the QR code on the screen if you're not already a member of the EWP user groups. If you already are a member of the group, please log into the group and find the links. And if you can, it would be much appreciated if you could reply by the end of this week, so that we can hear from you. The other quick reminder, if you could turn the slide, Nikos. Thank you. It's the EWP newsletter. You can now subscribe to this bimonthly newsletter that we have started working on. We have a link there. If you scan the QR code, you will see the link to the subscription link, but it's also been posted in the chat. So please, if you're not already subscribed to the newsletter, please subscribe. This will ensure that you have the latest important updates delivered to you directly into your inbox, so that you don't miss anything, any important announcement from the consortium or DGAC, any important information for you or your institution. So please subscribe to the newsletter so that you can stay informed about all of the latest. And with that, thank you so much for your attention, and Nikos, over to you.
Thank you very much, Harpa. And thank you very much, Bruno, first of all, for the welcoming address message. May I say that what Harpa just said, we also have the links in the chat. So everyone who doesn't have the QR code possibility right now, they can just see in the chat and click on the respective link and just go into the user groups or the newsletter. So going right into questions. We already have some in the Q&amp;A, and I see that they are not upvoted, but still, I think that I see a question, two questions, that are related to the nominations functionality that probably we can give a reply. So there is a question from Monique Van Levin about the planning. And there is also a question from Patricia Pelsit about whether it will be obligatory to have nominations through the EWP network. So I don't know who from our... Yeah, okay, so Alex, the floor is yours. I think you can reply to these two questions.
Thank you so much. So thanks for these questions. And indeed, we have been... There was a lot of information about these two new processes, so nominations and transcript of record. Records, these are processes which are now available for users. However, these are still an early release, an early version, which means that they are not mandatory, and we're still testing them. There is a lot of work to be done, which means now, based on the feedback from users and discussions within the Business Process Owners Forum, with the various governance boards, with feedback provided from the users, we will review the specifications, the mandatory specifications. And there might be also changes to the way the processes are implemented now, which means that they are available as an early release for the users to check, to test, to take a look at, but they're not mandatory. And if you don't want to use them, of course, there is no problem with that. It's an early stage. It's still a very... Let's put it, it's not yet mature to be used on a wide scale. So I hope this answers your question.
Thank you very much, Alex. I think that had been replied. And so there is also a related, I would say, question in the Q&amp;A about the timeline for applications and also transcript of records. So probably these are in the same group of new functionalities that are going to be deployed soon enough. So probably the same applies for them as well.
So as I mentioned, these are early releases. In terms of timeline, now the functionalities are available, but they would not become mandatory until we're fully sure that we have the specifications set and agreed by all partners, by all developers, that everything is finalised. So for now, we still keep it as an early release. And for the timeline, when everything will be ready, of course, you will know. But as now, to assure you, they're not mandatory.
Okay. Thank you very much, Alex, once again. I think before we go, because I see two attendees having raised their hands, and so it should be more interactive and probably go also to these questions that are put to the consortium live. Let me just take one more upvoted question in the Q&amp;A. It's about the functionality in beneficiary module. So the upload functionality, there is a comment from Florian Ellinger, is not properly working, so since it doesn't show the reasons for the errors, when can we expect to be fixed? Anyone that can take this up?
I can take this up for the beneficiary module. Now, of course, for users, this is DGAC, but our team is doing its most also to be in touch with the team that develops the beneficiary model, and we will pass this point to them. Unfortunately, the colleagues that work on the beneficiary model are not here because this webinar is aimed to focus specifically on EWP, but we can definitely share this point. Thank you for raising it.
Thank you very much, Alex, once again for this. I should mention probably, because there are some names in the panelists, lists that are not probably the participants are not familiar. There are colleagues from the DGAC team as well attending, so the information and the feedback is shared broadly in the team. So let's now pass the floor to the colleagues that have raised their hand. So I see Fabio Ravera. Please, I will give you the floor now, so identify yourself and the university that you are coming from. No, you have... For some reason, I do not see... You have put your hand down, probably. So let's go to the next one. Jessica Guedes, right? So please, go on with the question. Do you hear us, Jessica? Please unmute your mic. Yes? I see your mic unmuted, but I do not hear you. We do not hear you. I don't know if there is any problem with the... Try again, once again, please. No? No. Unfortunately, we cannot hear you. So please do check your settings, and we will give you the floor once again. Let's go to Lola Garin. Lola, good morning. I hope we will hear you. Please unmute your microphone. I do not see that. Can you unmute yourself? I will ask you to unmute. Yes, now? We do not hear you.
And now?
Yes.
Hello, good morning.
Hello, good morning. Please identify yourself and your institution, please.
Yes, I'm calling from Madrid, and this is Isep Seu. This belongs to the biggest private university group in Spain. It's vocational studies.
Okay, so your question related to EWP?
My question? Well, actually, I'm new on this role because the previous responsible is gone one month ago. So I am fully lost. I don't have questions. I am a question myself.
I think many colleagues probably being new in this position, identify yourself with your situation. So I think that our colleagues and Harpa can give you some guidance, initial introduction to the whole EWP ecosystem. So Harpa, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you so much for raising this point, Lola. And I completely understand. Being a newcomer to EWP, it must be incredibly challenging to understand what is going on. And for this very specific reason, we recently developed and published two new user guides. So these are documents that are meant to explain what are the first steps and how things should be managed for the learning agreements and IIAs in EWP. So I don't know, maybe in the chat, one of the colleagues could help us out by sharing the links to these user guides. I hope these would be a good starting point for you. And also to mention that the EWP user groups, this is a peer-to-peer support network that we've set up. So that's the link that I reminded about in the beginning. If you become a member there, you should also be able to reach out to your peers that are using the same system and ask how do you manage different processes. In your national agency, there is also a digital officer that may be of help to just get you started if there's any need. And finally, a reminder that there is a service desk. So in case you have any specific questions or any technical issues starting to use EWP, you can create the ticket, and one of the agents in the service desk will get back to you as soon as possible. So and also a final reminder that the ESKI portal also is up and running as a source of information. But just to say, we're well aware it's not an easy task to start using EWP and to be a newcomer in an IRO. So just to mention all of these support services that are already in place for you. And I hope it's a good starting point for you and other colleagues that are in this position.
Thank you very much, Harpa. I see that Paul has already shared the links in the chat, so you can go in the chat and just dive into this very challenging process. So also Alexandra, I think posted links in the chat. So we have these... I believe that we have you covered. Lola, I don't know if you have any other question, probably.
I appreciate. Thank you very much. I appreciate it a lot, and I will check all the deepness, all the materials and everything. At least I've been able to post the request for a new mobility project. So let's see.
Okay. All the best. Good luck with...
Thanks a lot. Thank you.
So I would think that we can go on and share the mic with Valentina Serino. I think she has already posed a question also in the Q&amp;A. So I think we can have both of them once. Yes, Valentina?
Good morning, everybody. My name is Valentina Serino. I'm from Università di Studi della Campagna Luigi Van Vitelli in Italy. And actually, I have a lot of questions that were given to me from my colleagues regarding some issues with the UVP, sorry, dashboard specifically. You can see two of them in the Q&amp;A already, and actually, most of them relate more or less to the same issue, which is the first one, actually, that my colleagues wanted to know if notification regarding the agreement will ever be activated, like when an agreement is approved, if there going to be a notification whatsoever. And also, and I think that is the main issue that was presented to me from my colleagues. It happens sometimes when, for example, there is an agreement specifically with the university, they use third platform, sorry. Like they do not use the dashboard directly. Sometimes it happens, for example, that we... That, for example, there is an error, a mistake, that the partner university doesn't have the ID. And we don't know what that means. Like, for example, they insert their data on the dashboard, we cannot approve the agreement, and then there is this mistake that says the partner university doesn't have the ID. And we don't actually what that means. Also, sometimes it happens that, for example, they don't see our data inserted on the dashboard or vice versa. So it's... Or even sometimes happens that we insert our data, they insert their data, and then for some reason, the data get cancelled. We don't know why this type of issues happens, and we would like to know how to deal with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Valentina. I think that this one is for Costa's, for the first part for the dashboard. Probably it has an aspect of interoperability in general, also the question about, you know, third-party providers and systems. So Costa's, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Nikos. As I understand, the colleagues are a dashboard user, right? An EWP dashboard user. I mean, the second issue that you are referring to seems to lie in the interoperability area. So I would definitely suggest for you to reach out to the service desk with some specific data for us to look into it and try to debug and see where the problem lies. To be honest, both of the issues that you refer to, I would suggest that you reach out to the service desk and try to figure them out. I mean, for the notifications, one, and the other issue about the interoperability with a certain provider, with all of the other providers. Some specific data so we can look into and debug.
I see. Sorry, where can I refer to this service desk? Like...
Ah, okay.
The link, Valentina, is already in the chat from Paul.
Okay.
So you can, you know...
Valentina, also, the link to the service desk is also present in the EWP dashboard landing page once you log in. I mean, it's the first thing that you are seeing in the landing page. Among other things, but the link is also there. I mean, colleagues are in the service desk. They are waiting for tickets, and we will look into both of these issues and try to figure them out and let you know.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Valentina. I think... I don't see something related to the Q&amp;A, probably. I see a question that is... Oh, okay, it's answered by Paul about notifications in for IIAs. But okay, Paul probably is handling it. So let's go to the next colleague that has raised her hand, I suppose. Cristina Varvelo. Good morning.
Hello. Good morning. Hi, everyone. I'm Cristina. I'm from the University of Torino in Italy. And I was typing my question on your form. What I would like to understand is, or just to point out, is one as an issue relating the nomination process handled with EWP. I know that there is still a discussion, an active discussion, I think, in the frame of a VP or user group. So what I'm learning, but I kindly ask you to make a clarification on this, is what is concerning EWP nomination. The process, if you... I think you may know, is quite complex. At the moment, currently, there are many, many different procedures that each institution is providing. So is also asked to follow, to send these nominees. What I would like to announce is that the discussion is going, I think, is going in another direction that is putting in the home institution in charge, responsible of providing personal and academic documents related each nominee. For example, transcript of records, language certificate, photos, personal photo, something like that. So I would like to point out that for a large university that is handling with a large number of students, this process could not be sustainable. So I would like to ask you if is there still a possibility to modify this... The implementation of this process? Is there still a possibility to change the approach? Because my personal opinion is that is providing this kind of information, personal and also academic information relating the career, university career, all of the student has to be in charge of the student, so the applicant. So this kind of information... So this kind of information and documents have to be provided in the application form and not at the nomination stage, you know, the nomination phase. So what I would like to ask you is to think to to let this process more easier, easier than now, that is now. Because it is quite complex. And so I would like that EWP let this process easier and not more complex than now. I don't know if I, I'm, I've been clear on my, on my question, my observation. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Cristina. I think probably Paul can reply to your comments. Paul, the floor is yours.
Yes, indeed, Nikos, and thank you for raising this question, indeed, Cristina. I think at the moment, part of the complexity with nominations is that you have as many nomination processes as you have partners. What we are trying to do now is with EWP, we are collecting information from many universities on how the process works. And the next step is that we kind of, that we define a general process that should work for everybody. So instead of having many, many processes, there's only one way of nominating students. And there, with EWP, the idea is that based on functionality in your system, you have the applications and you can nominate a student with a push on the button. And by pushing this button, some information that will be defined at the level of EWP will send to the partner university. Here, we will need to be aware that maybe for some universities, there's a very specific use case to ask a very specific field or data point. And of course, this cannot be the case in the future when we have a common nomination process. This ground, this ground-laying work we are currently carrying out, the user group consultation and the survey is happening right now. So please also provide your input there. Because based on the input from the users via the user group, we will define the process and we will create mandatory business requirements. The mandatory business requirements will inform the further technical developments that needs to underpin indeed a nomination where you and your system can just have a button or an action where you will send the data, the nomination, to the partner without needing to keep track of, for this specific partner, we need to provide this and that and that information via specific tools. So I think the main complexity with the current nomination process is indeed that we have a lot of different processes and tools that we need to nominate our students with. In the future, when EWP will support this and it will be used at scale, it will be possible to have a common approach towards nominations where the data is sent from system to system and there's no need to keep track of all those different tools and data sets you need to provide. But like I said before, this will of course also mean that for some universities, they will need to request a bit less information in the nomination process because we need to kind of come and have a synergy between all those different processes. And therefore, this consultation is of vital importance. I hope this clarifies your question.
Before Cristina confirms, probably Alex wants to add something on the policy level? Yeah?
Well, maybe just to say to Cristina that this kind of feedback is very valuable. Because as I mentioned, these are early release phase and the processes will be modified according to the feedback we receive from various users. So I just want to thank you for this kind of feedback, honest and open feedback. Thank you.
I don't know, Cristina, if colleagues have covered you?
Thank you very much to all of you. Can I, I have the time to give you another, to do another, make another question?
Yes, probably.
Very quick. Is relating to amendments of the agreements already confirmed, approved in EWP. So what I would like to ask you or just to point out is that, as you may know, the agreements can be modified. Normally, we are signing agreements valid for many years. And then after one or two years, we, at this time, we got the chance to modify it, so amend the agreement. What I would like to ask is relating to how this amendment will be handled with EWP. Precisely, I'm referring to the amendment and if is there a sort of deadline? What I would like to do, to say is that we need to set a deadline relating to amendment for the following years.
Before you proceed, I think that we need to clarify two things. First of all, are you a dashboard user?
No, no, a third-party provider.
From Italy, I suppose, Kineka, Cineca?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And the second question is about, you say amendments. Do you say that it's modifications of existing agreements? Or, you know, to add things or to renew?
No, modification of existing agreement.
Okay, okay. So I don't know who colleague is ready.
What I would like to do, to say is that currently, any modification has to be noticed to the partner one year before the mobility is. So for example, the template, I don't know, I think is at the end of September, the year before the mobility is will be carried out. So what I would like to understand is the, how this deadline will be handled with in EWP.
Okay, so the question, the question is if there is another deadline except the one mentioned in the agreement, right?
Yeah, in the frame of EWP, exactly. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cristina. I will give the floor to Harpa to reply to this one.
Yes, thank you very much, Cristina. This is incredibly important and just to mention, because I see there are also some questions in the Q and A about version seven of the IIA. Indeed, this is a very important functionality that is needed between systems. So that's over the duration of the seven years that the agreements are typically signed for, you may have a need to adjust what is written in the agreement. And right now, in some systems, this functionality is already enabled. However, there is no specification at the level of the network yet to ensure that this can be done in a harmonized, clear way across systems. So this is what we are working on in this new release that we are hoping will be an update that we can conclude early next year. Now, for how does this work? I think what you're referring to here specifically is that in the template of the IIA's, it is specified that you need to inform your partner, request an amendment with at least one year in advance, so that when you set up the internal selection calls in your university, there is clarity on what the agreements that you have with your partners stipulate. Now, we have addressed this to some extent in the new user guide. So you can see how we foresee that this functionality will work in release seven. But to answer your question here now already, we don't foresee that there is automated mechanism that prompts you to do this in EWP. You will, outside of the network, need to reach out to your partner, how you would normally reach out to your partner to discuss the terms and negotiate the terms of your partnership. So I would say this rule to notify your partner in a timely manner, that would be on you to do via email, to reach out to them and notify them. And then, once this is done, you have discussed and agreed on how you will amend the agreement. Then to confirm it at the level of the network, that is a second step. And for there, the network will not know if you're doing it within the deadline or not. You would have to take care of this, how you do it today, now, normally, to do it in a timely manner with your partner, to reach out to them, how you normally reach out to them. So this would be my reply, but I have other colleagues here also linked that maybe want to complement my reply if I forgot to mention anything.
Thank you, Harpa. Paul, probably, yes, to compliment?
No, I think indeed, it's good to know that it's currently not yet supported on the EWP level. So when you try to modify, it might work because by accident, your partner implemented it in the same way. But from the new release onwards, there's a strict protocol on how this should work. And I would also like to add that in the user guide, indeed, this is described. And the reason why deadlines are not built into EWP is to limit the technical, complex solutions. So I think for us as users, we don't need a system that enforces strict deadlines. We know what to do when. And then, once EWP will support this functionality, it will be possible to modify the agreements on time based on the user estimation, I would say. Not because we have implemented very difficult technical issues that might lead to more EWP-related issues. So that's the approach and the logic behind still counting on the users to keep the business rules into account and not building everything into the technical solutions.
Thank you very much, Paul, as well. I think that we should now, probably, because I see colleagues not raising hands, go to the Q and A section and see some upvoted questions there as well. I would like to ask colleagues that want to comment something, just to raise their hands. And because the Q and A section is about questions and not comments, because I see also some comments there, of course, they cannot be replied. It's your statements, it's your feedback. So please do raise your hands if you want to share it with all colleagues and to discuss probably your comments. So let's go to the most upvoted one. And I think probably this is for Kostas, because it's related to the dashboard. And so it's the process of deleting students' online learning agreements if the students have created several ones. So Kostas, the floor is yours, I suppose.
Yes, thank you again. This request has been popping up more often lately. I mean, it is, it is on our radar. From the latest webinar that we did, we understand the issue. We are looking into finding an appropriate way of solving this without affecting data exchanges on other levels. But what I can share with you now is that it is, it is in, it is under our radar and we will soon be able to do something about it.
Thank you very much, Kostas.
Thank you.
And I think probably this is an ESI-related issue as well. So just to give a hint for the European Student Identifier.
I mean, I mean, Nikos, this is, I didn't want to get into many details. This is why I said that we have to find an appropriate way so that the EWP dashboard users have clarity, but we also don't affect anything else elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Kostas. So let's go to the next, most upvoted question in the Q and A. I will read it, it's from Johannes Keller. Fortunately, I don't know the institution our colleague comes from. And I will give time to colleagues to reply. So is the EWP fact sheet function considered as completely implemented? If this is the case, how do you intend to evaluate functionality? And how do you intend to assure that the function is used more widely by the universities? The EWP fact sheet seems to be very important to solve the problem concerning the availability of correct contacts for learning agreements, nominations and transcript of records. Okay, so I think that Harpa will answer this one, right?
Yeah, well, happy to, happy to have a go at it at least. And thank you, Johannes, for this question. I completely agree with you that the fact sheet plays a very important role. This has come up frequently in my meetings with universities and also in the EWP user groups. But however, what we see is that even if it has a lot of potential to help facilitate important information like deadlines and contacts and achieve the intention that we had from the start with the fact sheet, that is, you as a user, you don't need to wait for partners to circulate PDFs sometimes every year to your email to update you in case of any changes. You should always be able to have access to this information directly in the system that you use, for example, to nominate students. Now, there is this functionality, the fact sheet, from what I can see, is definitely underused. And we need to review the fact sheet to see how can we make it as useful as possible for end users? And how can we support users in starting to use the fact sheet more in EWP? And to move away from the PDFs that are circulated via email. So we mentioned that there would be this updated release of IIA's in spring next year. As a second step, we also want to look into the fact sheet process and see what can be done there to optimize how it is designed and implemented. And to have a second release to fine-tune the fact sheets, how they work today. But that is something that we will put on the agenda for next year. There's already in the user guide, actually, for the IIA's, some references to things that we've identified to improve the fact sheets. For example, I can give one concrete example. Today, a lot of users, they are forced to put for every single support service a phone number and an email for all of those things. But in reality, sometimes this is not relevant. So they're putting, you know, fake email addresses just to allow to be able to fill in the fact sheet and circulate it with partners in EWP. But I, so this is something that's on our radar. I think more work could be done also for the future, thinking more longer term, to make sure that the fact sheet is really suited to the needs of end users. Because how it is today, the information is mainly collected at the central level of the university so that there's not a lot of possibility to add more details at the faculty level, for example. In the user guides, we have given some concrete examples of how you as a user can circumvent this, so to say. You can use certain features of the fact sheet to provide additional information if need be at the faculty level. But this is something that is on our radar. And of course, if there are doubts or if it's a common issue that people are not sure how this works or how they should use it, something that we can definitely take up next year in terms of maybe user support or user guides or things like that. So that would be my reply, but I also invite the colleagues. If anyone wants to complement, please jump in. But I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Harpa. Anyone else that wants to chip in? No, okay. I suppose we are covered. So let's go to the next upvoted question, which is from Lisa Frantini. It's a question about the European Student Card itself. So I think that probably Tio from DJAC can take this up. And I don't know if colleagues from the European Student Card lot can also then add any updates. So Tio, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much for this question. So so your question is, what is the current status of the European Student Card itself? And when is it supposed to be used? So first of all, just a, I can remind that the European Student Card itself will never be compulsory. It's up to HEIs, to higher education institutions, to decide if they want to join the European Student Card infrastructure and be able to provide it to their students if they request it. It is already in use, in fact, and we have actually 2 million already active cards in circulation across Europe. So if you're interested, if your university is interested to be able to provide the European Student Card to join the European Student Card. to join the European Student Card infrastructure, I invite you to have a look at our website. I think the website link for the European Student Card initiative has been posted in the chat. And you can see on the website all the modalities on how to join the European Student Card. And I hope I've answered your question. And if not, I can let also our contractor entity data, so Yerun and Antonio, complement my answer.
Yerun or Antonio?
I don't think we have anything to add, Theo. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Theo. It was perfectly clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well. Let's go to the next question, the upvoted question, which is from Amelie Kruger. When do we have to use the European Student Identifier? I think that this one will be taken up by Alex, right? You can answer this.
Yes, I'll be happy to answer it. And of course, if colleagues have anything to add, just jump in. So the essay currently, it's a mandatory field, which means it needs to be put and needs to be completed in the learning agreements. But as you know, it's mandatory in terms, it cannot be left empty. But it is not validated, which means that it is not checked by the system. Okay, so if your institution haven't yet issued the essay properly, as it is explained on the Wiki of JHOND and also in the EWP, on the ESK portal, then you can temporarily put, for example, another identifier or an email or whatever it is temporarily. So the essay, it is mandatory, means the field cannot be left empty. But now, currently, it's not validated. Now, when it will become mandatory, we encourage all institutions, of course, to issue the essay as soon as possible in the correct way. There are guides and explanations on how to issue the essay, both on the ESK portal and also on dedicated pages on JHOND Wiki. And we suggest you to already deploy the essay correctly because, as you understand, this is the thread line between the nominations and the learning agreement. And this allows us also to identify the students throughout the processes. However, for now, as I mentioned before, the nomination and transcript record are an early release phase and not mandatory. Also, the essay will do not have a deadline by this date. You need to issue the essay correctly. So what we say, that in order to avoid interoperability problems, the field of essay needs to be completed. So it cannot be left empty. For now, it's not yet validated. So even if you did not issue essay correctly, you can put another identifier there. But we highly recommend, warmly recommend, strongly recommend to issue it correctly and to follow the steps that are mentioned on the ESK portal in order to issue the essay. So when the processes will be stable and we will be ready for a wide-scale use, your institution will be ready and the essay will be there already in the correct way. I hope this replies to your questions. And of course, if colleagues want to add something, please go.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex. Before we give the floor to other colleagues that probably want to add something, I spotted two more questions related. So there is a question, I'm sorry, from Elisa Frantini as well and from, let me spot her, Sylvia Geisler, about where they can find, they can see the ESI of their students because they mentioned that ESI should be entered in the beneficiary module. So they are asking for a way where they can find this, where they can see the ESI. So I don't know if a colleague wants to take it up on this one. So they need the ESI, but colleagues are asking where they can find it, where they can see the ESI of the students.
I can maybe start to try to answer, and colleagues connected, please stop me or compliment if need be. I just wanted to say, related to what Alex was saying, that for the information on the essay, that we also included this in the user guide. We described in a bit more detail what is the nature of the essay. And there, for example, we say that, you know, it is a technical identifier first and foremost that's operating behind the scenes. So it's not a human-readable identifier nor something that you are expected to type in to any system. It's supposed to operate in the background. And implementing the essay and doing it correctly is not the responsibility of a colleague working on mobility implementation, but this is rather a technical task for your colleagues. So we added a specific section on this in the new user guides for the learning agreements. That being said, I am aware that there is this field in the beneficiary module. As Alex explained before, we are not the team that is responsible for the beneficiary module. So take this information with a grain of salt. But for now, it's not something that is being actively collected by the beneficiary module yet. As we said, it's not mandatory yet. Universities are still working on implementing the essay. So this is not a data field that you need to be concerned of yet for the beneficiary module. But it has been included as a way to prepare for a future, potential future, where we can have better import of data and easier import of data for the beneficiary module. So I would say this is something you do not need to be concerned with right now as a mobility coordinator, to find the essay and to somehow be able to read it and extract it and upload it to the beneficiary module. But this would be my, based on my personal knowledge, my reply to you. If any colleague here wants to compliment or correct, please go ahead. But to be spelled out very clearly, this would be a question, I would say, for your national agency first and foremost. They can create the tickets with the right team in EAC that is responsible for this to give you a validated answer on this.
Thank you a lot, Harpa. Anyone else that wants, I think it was quite clear how colleagues should contact their IT teams, I would say, to see the technical aspect because it's a technical issue, so it's not a colleagues from the from the Transrelations Office responsibility. So they cannot find it, it should be produced, generated by the university for the students. So they should contact their colleagues. So I think we can go on with the Q and A. But still, since this is a town hall meeting and we want for you to be, you know, to hear you and have a more lively participation, once again, please do raise your hands if you have a question. Just not type in in the Q and A section. You are free to raise your hand and have your question live with the colleagues. In the meantime, also, just to be clear, in the Q and A, those attempts to have a chat between the participants unfortunately will be dismissed, just for you to know, it could not be, of course, answered, we have only four questions. So if you have any comments, anything that you want to share, please also raise your hands. So the next upvoted question, which I'm going to group it with another, and probably this goes to Kostas, is about the dashboard, about the agreements, the institutional agreements. And so Stanislav Grossdanov asks whether it will be available, the functionality, to filter agreements per subject area. And the other question from a colleague from Greece, I suppose, Lydia Dimitrakopoulou. When can we export data regarding the IIA's from the dashboard to an Excel file? So, Kostas, if you can reply to these IIA-related questions, filtering and the exports.
Yes, thank you. I'll start from the export one. I think I've already answered to someone in the chat about that. Exporting IIA's in CSV, which is an Excel-friendly format, is offered in the EWP dashboard for some weeks now, as we presented in the latest webinar also. So the section is there. It's the export IIA's in CSV. It is already offered. We offered it recently, maybe this is why people haven't used it or don't know about this. But the functionality is offered for some weeks now. Now, for the other question about filtering, and I'm guessing that Stanislav is referring to both learning agreements and the institutional agreements, right? Probably. We have, we have a lot of filters in the EWP dashboard, a lot of filtering options. I know that every user would like to see ideally every field that the learning agreement holds and the institutional agreement holds, which is dozens of filters, right? I'm sure that the users would like to see each and every one of these fields as a filter. Now, I'm very reluctant to promise something because I'm not sure if it's technically feasible to actually offer more filters. But we are gathering the user's feedback and we try to comply as much as we can, as much as we can to it. I mean, I understand that the users would like each and every filter available for both learning agreements and interinstitutional agreements. We are looking into the feedback that the users are sending via the service desk. And believe me, we try to do our best so that we can offer functionalities that you deserve, unless it is something that is not technically feasible. I promise that I will also look into this and try to do something about it if it's feasible. For the time being, I would suggest that the users should fully utilize the numerous filtering options that are already offered there. Thank you. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Kostas, for the answer. I don't know if anyone else wants to add something. I don't know. I believe that was clear enough. Thank you very much, once again, Kostas. Probably I will think that we will remain in the dashboard side, EWP dashboard side of things, since we have the next upvoted question, which is Francisca Brokel. So she asks, will it be possible to add more people to sign online learning agreements on behalf of the sending institution in the future? We have a lot of students who study more than one subject and often their faculty coordinator cannot sign of courses on behalf of a coordinator from another faculty. So, okay, I don't know, it's Kostas or Nikos? Or something else that, yeah, sorry?
I think it lies more on the business process side. I mean, I can't comment. I can't comment technically about this.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Kostas. Harpa, do you want to take this on?
Well, I can just reflect on this question because I'm very familiar with this issue. So in the past, of course, when we had the paper-based agreements, it was quite common that there would be more than one colleague's signature on the agreement. Sometimes it could be two, it could be three. This was very different between universities. And this was also the case personally in my university when EWP started. Now, in the current system and in the new templates for the current program, 2021-2027 Erasmus+ program, it was a very deliberate decision to only have one signature on each partner's side to try to simplify processes for the student and also to minimize the volume of data that we needed to exchange, building up this large interoperability network. So I am aware that this, of course, poses a challenge for the universities because internally, if you have another colleague that typically would take a look and also provide their approval in the past, you need to either decide to change this process or internally have an added solution to do some pre-checking if that is needed or additional validation if needed before the agreement is sent with the partner. So I would just simply say, we take note of this remark, but it is something that we are always looking to simplify and streamline processes. So that means that here, for example, it was a conscious decision to have only one signature on each side before exchanging in order to simplify and streamline the exchanges. But this is just a bit of a historical reply, maybe. I'm not in a position to answer this definitively. But if anyone wants to compliment my answer, please go ahead. But just to say thank you for raising this point. And I think it's a good example of a challenge that we have with Erasmus without paper is that we need to harmonize and streamline processes across universities. And that can sometimes be a difficult thing to do because it requires also work on the site of the university.
Thank you very much, Harpa, on answering this one. Anyone else that wants to add something? No, I do not see something. So I think we can go on with the upvoted questions since we have no raised hands in our participants list. So the next one is from Giulia Marini from Padova, University of Padova. So what she's asking is saying that they are testing online learning agreements via EWP with some of our partners. It happens very often that the online learning agreement is commented on due to the expected dates of mobility. Our partners often require that the exact dates correspond to their semesters, while in our system, the dates correspond to the duration of mobility set in the bilateral agreement. Since the scholarship is calculated on this duration, we cannot modify the dates. I was wondering if it is possible in the future, considering to only enter the period of stay and avoid asking the exact dates. I could probably also comment on that, to be honest. I don't know if you want me to. But yeah, whoever wants to reply. Because it's a business process, I think, so it's not EWP-related so much. It's not a technical issue. It's a communication and common agreement between part universities, right? So not all things happen through EWP. We need to be in contact with our partners and jointly decide, have a, say, convention about what these dates should be. So.
Yes, indeed, Nikos. But what I also would like to highlight is that there are dates indeed on the learning agreement, which is more indicative, I would say, for the mobility because in a later phase, there's still a lot of changes, right? And it is very important from the sending university perspective to have confirmation of those dates. And we also, many people working in the IRO are aware about the confirmation of stay and arrival and all of that. Now, of course, this is not yet in scope of EWP and digitization processes, but it's clearly on the radar as well. As for the learning agreements, it's also written in the user guides that those dates are not a reason to reject the learning agreement, for example. So one should really focus on the content. It's also, if you look at the API itself, you do not need to provide the exact date. You can just provide a month and year, but it will depend on your system whether you have this possibility or not. But it's also indeed a bit of getting on the same page in terms of usage of the learning agreement functionality. And as written in the user guides, it's better not to reject a learning agreement because there's five days difference in the start of the semester and the learning agreement data. So this is something that needs to be further looked into when further digitizing the process. But of course, it's the current only part that is digitally exchanged. And indeed, many universities do reject the learning agreement because of the dates are not correct. When we just look at the technical side of things, there's no new version of a learning agreement because dates are changing. So this is also a bit, it makes it a bit more difficult. But I would, once again, recommend to go to the user guides and follow the logic there because if you're all on the same page on how the process should work, it will make the exchanges also much easier.
Thank you very much, Paul, for your reply and comments on that. So the next one, the next question. Let's go to the colleague that has raised her hand. So let's leave the Q and A part a little bit to have a live question from our colleague, Monika Van Leven. Hello, Monika. I think you are now muted.
Do you now hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Um, I think this is very helpful, this eh, eh session, so, and I see a lot of questions in the Q and A and I hope that eh, I can imagine you cannot answer them all at this moment, but I hope you will be answering this, them at another moment, so we, we can read them. Eh, what I find difficult, my first question um was, what's the planning, what's eh, what do you think how it's going to be with the nominations? And at this moment, I have to make a plan for the coming year. What money do I need? How many people do I need? What are we going to do? And it's very difficult because I already saw someone else also eh addressing this. What is the plan? What is the timeline? What um, how many people do I need to um help with this project? Um, and it's difficult because I'm, I'm missing a, a general project leader that has a plan. How are we going to address this bigger problem? We um are very willing to, to join with E, EWP um, but eh that's my main concern at this moment.
Okay, thank you very much eh, Monique, for the feedback eh. Who can, who wants to eh reply to Monique about how she probably should proceed? I think the timeline part of nomination has already been eh answered by Alex eh at the beginning of the, of the meeting eh, but.
That was not, that was a current situation, but it's not a timeline. It, it's not that um, we think in twenty twenty-four, we expect the second half of the year. Eh, we are in the next phase or something like that. So.
Hmm.
I'll need some more.
Yeah, A- A- Alex, we take the floor. Thank you, Monique.
Yes eh, first of all, thank you, Monique, for eh, for raising this. I'm, I fully understand your concern. However, we cannot provide you a timeline of in this year we'll digitalize eh eh this processes and the next year we digitalize the next processes. As you know, we had already some deadlines and fixed schedules and schedule in the past for the IAAs and the LAs. And we have that eh when we had this fixed eh deadline, that created a lot of eh stress and tension within the institutions because some institutions were ready with IAAs and LAs, for example, and some still are, while the others did not have the necessary um eh, the necessary infrastructure, the necessary IT team in order to digitalize and be ready to exchange IAAs and LAs through EWP. Lesson learned from this experience that now the processes that are deployed eh, for example, nominations and transcript of record are not mandatory. They're in testing phase. They're still eh being eh seen as early release. Until we will have them fixed eh, until we have collected all the data and all the information, they would keep eh, keep as they are now, not mandatory and not eh ready for wide deployment. I wish I could provide you that, I could tell you that in the end of twenty-four, we will have these processes ready and that ready. But having the network um, having the network let's say, how can I, sorry for taking a moment here. I just want to be sure that I fully reply to your question. But having, having the network eh consisting of different players, of different institutions that have different capacities, we cannot put strong timeline or fixed timeline and fixed deadlines because this would be eh unfair towards institutions with different capacities. So I understand your question, that there is a need for more clarity and I take it eh towards my team. I take it towards eh our um, our hierarchy to further discussion. But at this point, we cannot provide a fixed deadline eh while we know that the landscape across HIs is so fragmented and not everyone will be ready. So we'd actually cause a situation where some institutions will be lagging behind, some, some institutions will be running in the front eh, in the forefront and we will have eh even bigger um eh even bigger gap between various institutions that we have now. And we, of course, don't want to have eh such growing gap. So I take your point into consideration, but I also say that for now, we eh IAAs and LAs eh should be exchanged digitally eh nomination, transcript of record are available for, for users to test and use. However, we do not put strict deadlines or fixed timelines eh to the digitalization process of Erasmus plus.
Thank you very much eh.
And of course, I invite other colleagues to add on this if you have anything to add.
Thank you for your answer. Um, I eh, I, I, I understand eh what you're saying um. But this also means that eh if I don't have a plan and um we'll be waiting for everything and it, it will take more time at the end.
Yes, Monique, I understand and this is why I take your point. Um, I take your point into consideration. Of course, the goal is to digitalize as many processes as possible in EWP to make the lives of IROs more simple. But we don't want to run forwards without assuring that the systems are ready for that, that institutions are ready for that eh, that we're able to exchange properly before announcing any eh, a new deadlines or new um, or new timelines. So I take your point. Thank you for raising this. Thank you for also being very open and, and honest about this. And um, I promise to, to bring it forwards.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't know if there is another colleague wanting to contribute. Okay, so eh, thank you very much, Monique, for the question. Let's go back to eh. I think there is a question in the Q and A waiting, but I also see Sarah Neumann eh raising her hand. So eh, let's go to the other colleague eh to, to Sarah and then probably go back to the eh Q and A. Eh, so eh, Sarah. Good morning, good afternoon. So eh, we have more five minutes for the meeting eh, so any of you who want to eh have a question, please do. Eh, Sarah. You have a mute, we have a muted your microphone. We cannot hear you. You're saying something to us. No, still nothing. No, we do not hear you. I see your microphone unmuted, but we cannot hear you. Okay, not wasting time, we will go to the Q and A and eh if you solve your problem with eh settings, we will be here and we will have eh, so let me just eh. Please raise your hand once again eh when you're ready. Eh, so we're going to the Q and A. Eh, I think I have a question or more than one eh related to the registration portal. Eh, so eh, Julian Horman eh has a question that um they use a third-party provider to connect to EWP eh, they can activate and deactivate. I'm sorry, I just lost the question. So eh, activate and deactivate EWP APIs through eh their third-party provider. What other functionalities eh does the new EWP eh registration portal contain? What is in its purpose eh? In brackets, the portal where we are supposed to nominate EWP admins to access it. Eh, so I think that Joao will be the one answering this eh. And also, there is another question about by when, by Merle Struve, about by when do they have to be registered on this website? Is there a deadline? Joao, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Nikos. Um, I actually think there's a third question from you and as if memory serves on this topic. I hope I can cover them all, but the colleagues will let us know if there's not enough clarity. And let me try to explain the registration portal, not from a technical viewpoint, but from a business viewpoint. So the notion of the registration portal is to have a place where the manifest files of EWP can be managed. And if the colleagues in the room have no idea what a manifest file is, that suggests that maybe this needs not be in your immediate concern. A manifest file is basically an integral part of the architecture of how each higher education institution is represented in EWP. Now, in the case of the colleagues that are eh represented by a third-party provider, indeed, the third-party provider is declaring them to EWP and they don't really need to take action. But the registration portal is important for future proofing this process in the event that eh ever in the future you were, for example, to change um, to change providers. And this is something that is part of a discussion that is called data portability, which is still being worked on, so we're not going to make any, any great announcements here. And it's also important for systems that use in-house systems because in those cases it stands to reason that universities need to be in control of their EWP settings. And so the advantage eh, the simplicity of the EWP administrator entitlement is that it allows each institution, particularly the ones that are part of federations, but this is going to be extended, is being extended also to the non-federated institutions, to designate an authorized contact person. So you can do this from your own system. Um, and then the registration portal will recognize, give access, and this is really a technical profile. At present, there is no deadline to enforce this. I think anyone that has a need to interact with the registration portal is encouraged to eh follow the pathway of eh designating an EWP admin. There is already some support material and how this can be done. Um, I want to stress, it is a technical question. It's not going to be international relations officers eh handling this process. This will be something that in most universities will be done by the colleagues that deal with the authentication of staff um and the management of the users of the institution. So I hope that in a nutshell eh, this is about it. So no eh deadline. Eh, main focus on ending manifest files and then eh also perhaps at another occasion, let's return to the ways in which this helps assert, which was what got us into the registration portal in the first place, the right for the universities, for the higher education institutions to be in control of their own settings, particularly if there's ever a need for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joao, on the clarifications on the registration, EWP eh registration portal eh. Let's go back to Sarah because we are eh probably running out of time eh, so um. Let me. Yeah, so, yeah, we hear you now. Hello.
Wonderful. Um, I would like to eh comment or add to what Monique van Leven has said um.
Sarah, great. Or you comment, please share with us your university you come from.
I'm sorry eh, Hamburg um, University of Technology, Germany um. Yes, it is, is correct. I agree with Alexandra Licht eh that strong deadlines or strong timelines um pose a problem with this multiple landscape. But however, the multiple landscape of users, stakeholders or participants has been there to begin with. So that's no news now and it wasn't eh um eh, eh, a new issue when we started out with this huge project and I was wondering um, what measures could be taken in order to um speed up those who are lagging behind, for example, very small universities who have a much bigger um job to do eh regarding the infrastructure they can actually use. And um, if there can be no timeline, I was wondering, could there not not be an update on the current state of how many people are using it or are connected and how many are fully operational? I know there's the EVP stats portal and I can see if um, if a partner is connected and I can sort of interpret if they are actively using it, but it's not really helping me. And I was wondering um, if this could be improved um, even if it's just about nominations.
So someone, yeah, yeah, thank you, Sarah. Can someone eh take this up?
I can eh.
Yeah.
I can just mention one thing and then pass to Paul that would eh complement. So eh, Sarah eh, what can be done to support smaller institutions? So there is eh, as mentioned by my colleagues, there is a lot of material eh, the user guides that are eh published eh just a week ago. There is a lot of eh material also that can be found in terms of eh eh guides, eh step-by-step guides on the ESC portal. There are the recordings of the webinars and of course, the relationship managers eh that are eh working very hard to reach to all the, to eh the big institutions, but also the, to the small institutions to accompany them in eh further accelerate the process of eh joining and successfully exchanging on EWP. Now eh, I will pass the floor to Paul that can complement on the second part of your question.
It's sorry, um, what I actually meant was money or people, sorry. Um, that's a question to Alexandra Licht.
Oh, I don't know.
Yes, I can answer. So from eh commission-wise in terms of um money and people, eh of course, eh as eh, well, as a European institution, we cannot provide for each institution additional eh, additional eh budget, but there is a part within eh, or within the program budget eh, within the support budget that its institution eh receives eh that can be also allocated to eh, to activities within um, um, within EWP. Now, on here, I would also ask you maybe to turn eh to your national agencies as eh the national agencies and eh, well, the Erasmus plus agencies eh, they know of various projects eh that are on the national level, for example, or organized eh with another consortium, so eh that aim to um accelerate the digitalization. So here I would actually eh suggest you, because there is the funds of, of the program itself, right? We do not have specific funds for institutions to eh um, advance on EWP. But here, I would suggest you to eh, to turn to your digital officer, which is a part of the national agency, to turn to a national agency and to check whether there are any local projects or any projects um within, well, within Erasmus plus, whether it's a K three, a K two, that eh can support you in the implementation. So there were similar projects like this in various countries where eh the side projects helped institutions to accelerate them on specific points on EWP. So that can be, that can be eh a way forward.
Thank you very much. I don't know if any colleague, Paul, you want to add something?
I, 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 I maybe can also answer the second part of the question. Um, institutions connecting, connected and willing to use EWP, but sometimes eh the partner might not yet be connected or might be connected and not using EWP. And there, I think it's indeed eh an important finding. Um, and, and it's also something we are currently working on eh in an EWP assessment report eh which is eh to be published eh in the course of next month. Um, where we indeed analyze the state of play eh. We, we had an assessment report about one year ago where we identified some eh of the issues that, that users were, were confronted with. Eh, and, and today indeed eh, we see, we hear from feedback from, from many of the colleagues that this is causing more and more trouble, that um, the, the, the institutions eager to use EWP and, and for example, instruct students to use eh digital learning agreements. Um, they, they, they have difficulties with completing this process because the other parts might be connected but not using EWP. Eh, so it's indeed one of the things that, that's, that's on the radar from the EWP consortium and DJEAC. And I think also the time is now to pass on to Harpa because eh the relationship managers are also, of course, on this, on this topic.
Yeah, very briefly, but just to say eh, Sarah, that we are aware that this is eh an issue. So we were eh having an internal meeting recently deciding how should the relationship managers eh prioritize the, the upcoming weeks. And eh, and this is indeed what we've done. We went through the stats portal. We found eh the universities that are not connected or are connected, but for some reason don't appear to be exchanging any data yet. This is a very important issue eh. We are lining up meetings eh in the coming weeks to try to understand what is the cause of this, how can we move forward? Eh, it is a very tricky situation, I would say. Like Alex said eh before eh, we don't want to push too hard because we don't want to put unnecessary pressure on universities or put them in a difficult position. At the same time, we have the universities that are ready to exchange and are waiting for the others to come online. And how do we move forward here? Eh, I don't have a, a concrete solution here, but I just wanted to mention that we are taking this very seriously and in the work of relationship managers, this is going to. In the work of relationship managers, this is going to be our primary focus in the weeks to come, to reach out bilaterally to those universities. I would say, give them a gentle nudge and then also, at the same time, what is the issue here? Why aren't you connected yet or exchanging yet? To try to understand what could we do to address this without creating a situation that we, we have two strict deadlines? That also have been a problem in the past. So that's just what I wanted to compliment and thank you very much for raising this important point here today.
Thank you very much, Harpa, Paul and Alex for the clarifications. I think we should probably proceed with the next colleague that has raised her hand is Zoe Hadzioano, I see here. So let's give Zoe the floor. You are muted, Zoe, so. I don't know if you are. Talking to us. We cannot hear something currently. No, still nothing from your side. No, we cannot hear you, unfortunately. Still nothing. So let's go again to the Q and A, if colleagues agree, and have a question from there while Zoe is trying to. See her settings, so the question that we have an aborted question in the Q and A is about, is from Sarah Elena Rosman. Could you please explain the new restrictions in the API seven version? It's about an example is four-digit ISKET codes. I think Paul can take this up, so Paul, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Nikos, and there are indeed several questions on this new version of the inter-institutional agreements. And I think I already posted in the, in the chat, the link to the SKE portal where there's an article about what is exactly. Included in this, in this new version for inter-institutional agreements. But indeed, amongst others, one of the issues there or one of the things that is, that is included. I wouldn't call it that it's more restrictive, it's more facilitating interoperability. Because there's many issues that were raised on. That not both partners use the same ISKET vocabulary. And therefore, I think it's now clearer that we need to use four-digit ISKET codes. And it's also recommended to use the sets from the beneficiary module. Does this mean that you cannot use general ISKET codes anymore? That's certainly not the case. It's a recommendation to use the beneficiary module dictionary. But like what you also can do is if, when you, when you like to use a broad ISKET code as to out zero. So this is also compatible, I would say, and then you can exchange agreements with four-digit ISKET code. So this is not, certainly not a restriction in terms of having only very narrow fields. It's more technically making it more easy for systems to exchange. The inter-institutional agreements. And as said before, part of this new version also includes the possibility to modify approved agreements. Which is currently not the case in EWP. So there, indeed, you can, for one academic here, modify the spots on an agreement, it's common practice, we all know. There's also a possibility to terminate agreements. And language requirements will be provided for student mobility for studies and staff mobility for teaching. So there, it will be required to provide those data points. So it's a combination of user requirements, program requirements, because modification of agreements and termination of agreements. That's a requirement from the program that was not yet available via EWP. So here, I think, if you still have doubts about this, this new version of the IAs. I will once again post the. Link in the chat and you can find all the information relevant for us as IRO stakeholders there. Of course, the technical community is already discussing this, this version seven for a very long time. And the specifications were, if I'm not mistaken, published in August and there was a workshop recently. So the technical colleagues are currently preparing this, this work. And of course, testing and all of that will be included so that we can have a seamless. A seamless migration from, from one version to another, because of course, it's clear that the functionalities are working better now. We want to keep this pace, so it's, this will be monitored also very closely by both the consortium together with DJA.
Thank you very much, Paul. I think this is covered as well. I don't know, Zoe, if you can, if we will be able to hear you, if you have. I see you're unmuted, but still we cannot hear you. No, but if I am not wrong, I see here a question of you in the Q and A, so I will probably combine these two. So in your question, the Q and A, you say that we would like, I'm really sorry. We would like to be able to make all changes, adding, for example, to both signed IAs. Because sometimes we would like to add the department to an already signed IIA or add spots. So this is more of a request and comment, I would say. And I don't know if some of the colleagues want also to. Reply to Zoe's comment.
I hope, Nikos, the reply was included in my intervention from a few minutes ago. Because indeed, that's, that's, that's one of the new functionalities that will be supported with the new version of the IIA.
So we have Zoe covered as well, thank you, Zoe, unfortunately, we could not hear you. But thank you for raising your hand. So I don't know if all colleagues agree and participants as well, because we are thirteen minutes past the original planned time of this meeting. So I think we can wrap it up, I would like to thank all colleagues for joining, first of all, participants in this town hall meeting. I would like to thank also all panelists for joining and providing you, I hope, all these great insights and the questions, replies to your questions. In-person live or through the Q and A functionality. The recording of the event will be available, as always, through the European Student Cup Initiative YouTube channel. So hopefully, until probably tomorrow or even today, we will be able to upload it there. And you will be able to rewind and see all the questions and answers. Once again, thank you very much for joining and hope to see you soon in the upcoming events. Of the European Student Cup Initiative. Have a great day, all of you, and see you soon.